I'll start by introducing the board. Starting on my left over here is Grant Keen, Terry Kasek, Lenora Murad. I'm Randy Boecker. Our recording secretary is Dory Shaw, John Machos, and Karen Stanislaw. Town attorney is with us tonight, Vera Kelly. Code's enforcement officer, Joe Booth. We have two items on the agenda tonight. From the town. House of Justice's office, Darlene Abada-Collis with us tonight. As I mentioned, we have two items on the agenda tonight. We'll start with, Dory, you'll read the application. I'll ask the applicant to bring anything that you think is important to your particular application, whether it's diagrams, pictures, letters of support, anything that you think is going to make your case. We'll open it up to the board at that point. They may have questions on your particular application. We'll open it after that up to the audience. I'll ask you to direct all your comments to the board, not to the applicant. And at that point, we hope to close and make a decision, depending on anything out of the ordinary on both of these applications tonight. So with that said, I'll have Dory read the first app. And we are one board member short tonight. He wasn't able to make it. He's out of town. So I'll offer to both the applicants, if you want to proceed with six board members rather than seven, just let us know. Or if you want to wait till the next meeting, when we have a full board, let us know that too. So with that said, now I'll have Dory read the first application.
The application of the Anadasis Golf Club, 8639 Center Return Pipe, New Hartford, New York. The applicant would like to place a 54-foot-by-100-foot cart and storage building to replace previous building. This property is located in a PR Parks Recreation Zone, which limits the height of an accessory structure to 15 feet and prohibits the placement of said structure in a front yard. The applicant is seeking a 19-foot-six-inch plus-or-minus area variance on the height of the structure and a 55-foot-plus-or-minus front yard sub-vent area variance.
You want me to come up to you directly?
Yeah, I'll come right up.
Yeah. Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome. I'm Darryl Ricky. I was asked to put together a plan for the Anadasis.
Here it is, by the way.
Yep. Actually, here's another one if you need one for use. The starting questions, very quickly, is, I went to Club Car, the company that they rented their cars for. I was looking at their minimum and maximum for height for inside for charging, full 60 carts. Minimum was 12 feet. That minimum means if you're under the act, they have to put a full air system in. So we ran the building up for two reasons, other than it was free air, so that these carts will, you know, ventilate on their own very easily in full. Secondly, is I asked the company, because they don't want to build another building, I asked them, could we double-deck these carts inside? Case down the road, we want to go to 70 carts. Minimum is 16 feet, accommodating the lights. Every cart sits at seven feet, and then you've got your structure, and then another seven feet, then you'd be still under the height, just for storage. Now, that's first floor, why it's 16 feet. Second floor is, is basically, if you look by the plans, it has storage area up in it. If any used people had been to the Anadasis, bed inside the Anadasis, as zip for storage, for all their outside furniture, anything that comes. So it was a pretty easy way to use all that space for that high peak. And you're probably asking, why it's got to be so tall? Aesthetically, I looked at the peaks of the Anadasis. I looked at it from, you know, from hole eight, looking backwards. If you look at all the gables, they point to the northeast. So this just adds one more, like a baby gable. So that aesthetically, they don't fit right in here like it belongs. Like, we wouldn't even know the building was there. It should've been there for 100 years. It's a, you're right, 100 is a little, it's tall. But if you look at the Anadasis, it's 47 feet in the air, from the bottom to top. So really, it's not going to look that tall once it's in its place, because it's 20 feet below grade compared to the Anadasis building. So it's really just a baby version of it. I can't, it's non-insulated building. There's no insulation. It's a wide-open building. It's just designed, because I think they're just gonna, you're noticing all the doors that are on it. It's basically has the ability to, if it happened, something happened again, they could quickly get these carts out in a matter of seconds. You know, that's the key, the safety. You know, because I expect, what, every day, these doors are going to fly up anyway, so they have access out of there, anyway they had to. So I think they're making the precautions, what mistakes were made years ago. You know, the fire that happened, it was, it went up like it said fast. So I think they're making it that. Where they're locating it, basically, just fits perfectly, you know, for where the pro-shop is right now. Pretty much it. It's a pretty simple building to build. It's just, it's a fully engineered building by plan, so there's no, all the plates are all LVLs. You have structural trusses above your LVLs to hold up your doorway frames, everything. So it's a fully engineered building. This is a little bit different than you normally see buildings usually built.
And what's the capacity for the carts? 60?
It's actually, if you do buy square footage, under 60. You'd have to, you know, we left open lanes for carts to get out quickly, so it is under 60.
Okay. Where are you storing the carts now?
Out in tennis courts.
Yeah, but are you, are they gas or electric?
Electric.
Where are you charging them?
They're charging in the existing building right now, then they put it right back outside. So that's, that was one of their rule contracts with the lease company, to build the building. So that's why the building has to be built. You know, they've got brand-new carts that need to be stored indoors. They can't sit out in the tennis court, at least no sense at all.
Are you getting rid of the tennis court, or the courts, to build the building?
Yep.
What are you going to do with all those, all those seaters that are coming down? Along the side there?
One minute we talked about getting, using the building as boundary, and the next time we talked about, it may go three feet inside that, and you leave it alone, you know, and close the building right inside the fence.
But you don't know yet.
Well, I mean, it has a lot to do with what we run into, you know, in that too. I mean, you know, it's in the ground. I'd like to get outside that perimeter of that thing, because it gives me one side of the building to drill down into the ground. The others, I've got to stop cut out and drill in every spot and fix it. There's electrical system there, you know, light system. Obviously, last thing I want to do is run into that. Down, I've got the area of the light, your wires, your three-phase coming in, you should be away from that, so that's not an issue. So that may push me back behind that fence. I can't really think that either way, it's going to make a difference. You know, I myself like the building as becoming the fence, because it is a border.
Yeah.
You know, that's what I'd like to see. But if they would like to keep it inside, we'll keep it inside. But I need at least a minimum of three feet from that fence to put steel on. You've got an overhang that hangs out there, can't get into that.
Where are you bringing in the power to the building? Where's that going to come from? This building over here? Where are they doing it?
Transformers right in the front corner, right here. That's where power will be coming directly in. It's right over the top, it's right just outside the building.
Okay.
So it's a quick sweep right in.
Yeah. Okay, so you know, to change that.
Nothing has to be really changed. I mean, the building fits perfectly to this spot, only because if you needed to wash carts, there's water right there, you know, to put some. If anything else, it's pretty simple. I mean, it's, you already have a hard surface to work on, you know, with a tennis court. So that part's a pretty easy. Other than core drilling holes, you know, through this mat, drill down through.
So you're not going to put a floor in, just going to use the tennis court?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have any more questions?
Yeah, I guess you answered half of them as I was writing notes down. The old one burnt down, we all know, right?
Yep, that, I think, two and a half years ago.
Yeah, where was that location?
Just east of that, probably be about 50 yards.
50 yards.
And it was heading in a different direction.
Right. How tall was that other one?
If I remember, it was only 10 feet tall, so the total height would probably, with a normal pitch, would be another 5 feet, so that'd be 70 feet.
So what would be the variance between the new one and the old one, roughly?
How, distance between the two?
All the height-wise.
Oh, I mean, we're looking at 34 feet versus probably it was 20 feet total, the other building. And that was probably one of the, well, it's an existing building back then. If you look at every building that's built today, I mean, everything gets taller today.
Well, we're sitting lower. We're sitting lower than you're saying?
Well, they were both right on the same, same level.
Is it same low?
Yeah.
It's a lower building.
All right, so the location's going to be the same or similar to?
Yeah, within, like I say, 50 feet to 70 feet difference.
Overall size, we talked about. Any other way that you can construct this, that it could conform to our codes?
You're asking the height?
I'm asking you, any other way, can we go wider, longer, instead of taller?
Without needing a variance.
Right.
We were trying to keep it in that one tennis court, it's 120 feet long, and we were trying to get out to center line of, between two tennis courts. So if we go any difference, other than turn it the other way, we would take up two tennis courts.
I'm going to ask you a question. Do you think this, in any way, will change the character of that area?
It'll look prettier.
Do you have any pictures of what it will look like?
Huh?
Do you have any pictures of what it will look like?
Mostly, all I can do is what you see here. I'd have to, you know, we could actually, I mean, it's like taking a picture of the main Anadasis, the main, over their dining room area, and just picturing it over here. The only issue would be difference is, we were just discussing a few seconds ago, should it be shingled, what's existing? Or should we be thinking down the road, that, you know, standing scene, this is the main place down the road? I'm looking at the snow loads, all the different things, looking at maintenance tree, looking at a lot of different things. Shingles to me are obsolete.
Yeah, let's go back to my question. Is there any other way that you can actually do this?
I'd have to make it a lot bigger. And then they would have to change their area, where it's going to be put.
Okay, so it's going to intrude into what, another court, or?
If we went that way, it means you can make the building a lot wider.
Yeah.
I mean, you're only looking at 54 feet, you can go up to as far as 80 feet, you know, and really take up some area. Or get it off that, you know, that area, and you're just putting it into existing where it used to be.
Yeah, so your purpose of going the height again?
The total height?
Yeah.
It's just, I'm trying to duplicate the look of the main structure.
You're starting to.
Yeah, aesthetic of the thing.
Okay, thank you.
And why don't you want to go where it used to be?
I'm actually thinking down the road, that we're, you know, we, nobody was there, and I was there, the day that all the kids came in for golf tournament. We're lacking parking. So if we stick a big building out there, right, we were, one thing I noticed as being a member too, is all the buses that came in, which took up the main member. If we actually build this building, and actually push everybody another, you know, a yard, we'll put all those big buses down there where the children, where they can come directly up to the course, instead of walking, you know, 200 yards to come up through. Plus, you're not irritating other members with these monster buses taking up room. It's just an area that's not been used at all. You know, that east side there? And it's, it's, two other things I ran into problem with, the existing building, where, what, the old building? I would've had to run up, because the flooding would've went straight through it. I would've had to run that side up either, which wouldn't have been a problem, it's just, but I had some more dramatic, more costs.
No way you're going to see any structure that's going to impair the vision of any oncoming or outgoing?
No.
Okay.
No. I think from the road, once we lose all these leaves and everything, you know, for winter, it's going to really stick out and look pretty. That front area there, the way I finished it in the beginning, the gables you see are to match the club. It's supposed to, you know, it should look aesthetically exactly what the club looks like. So fooling people, it only stores carts, but I'm fooled with them. You know, it's part of the Anadasis.
Except I did read, I was curious, it said that there might be also used for a venue, for outside events?
It could be. We don't really know. I mean, nobody knows where our economy's going. The venue they were talking about is these, if we take all the carts out, and say we throw tables in it, where these golf tournaments can be run out of there, you know, the people that run them? So they basically could run their, the kids out of that building, instead of using the club or outdoors. That's all, that's what the venue is all about. I mean, there's a lot of children that play, you know, college and everything, and they have, they just hang it around. So it basically gives them a stationary area to be. In the lower part of the Anadasis, that club has restrooms, the whole nine yards. So it's kind of a perfect scenario for all these tournaments that we're running in the next 12 years.
No, I've been listening. I guess it's about everything here.
Okay.
And what you're saying is sort of, it's going to look like the Anadasis building.
Yeah, I really will sit down with them, probably kind of a little bit tonight, to determine what the actual, where the whole club's going and what down the road. They should, one should fancy the others, what I'm trying to get at. You know, to me, I think down the road, you know, because steel's looking so pretty today, the what I sell, there's so many different versions of it today. You can make something look really fancy. So the question is, should we keep it like the Anadasis with the panes to shingle? Or should we be going the other way down the road, once that goes away, you know, roofing with steel, you know, standing scene, really bringing up, you know, the value dramatically? Plus, it's maintenance. You've got zero. You've got snow loads, zero. You know, that's going to fly off. That's really, because there's no porches on the Anadasis, so it's not going to be an issue of collapsing anything below it. Plus, if it is, we can put snow jacks up there, slow it down anyway. If, you know, areas where people are.
What material was the previous?
I think it was a standard post and frame.
And the roof?
Steel. I think it was steel. Was it steel, fellas?
Aluminum.
Aluminum?
I think it was aluminum.
Okay. So obviously, when it went up, it went up fast. It's just.
Just a lot of the other.
Well, this building here is fully, has a steel ceiling and steel walls, probably applied wood up four feet, so basically, we're going to control all that, you know, any steam.
You're going to need sprinklers in it?
No. No. No, our only reason to steal is basically to stop that millisecond, you know, plus anything, any building that's wide open, there's always birds, different things like that, you don't need to have in there, have a field aid with you.
Your cart's going to be all electric, though.
Oh, pretty much they're all standard. Most of the new carts today are all electric. But don't be fooled, even under a triple charge, right, they're giving off, you know, smell. And that smells can linger in any building. So the question is, is how much air should you give them when the first person that walks in there to take out the carts? What should we be doing? Should be given on the maximum amount of air.
You're saying that air is combustible?
No. It's just a smell. Bottom line, I don't know what if it'll do anything to you, right, but bottom line is, you know how people are, they're in a hurry, you do the wrong things, they should be going in there and opening doors up, just because it's a day. But people cut corners, and I don't want to see that happen. I mean, you know, because there are a lot of young kids that work there. So we're just taking the precaution, that's all.
You're Kenneth Roberts?
Hmm? No, no, I'm Darryl Ricky. Ken Roberts is the one designing, or you put the building.
Yeah, I see that. What's your role there?
Huh? I'm the actual contractor-supplier. So I'll be the guy that basically supplies all the job, and would, I'll be going over. I have two crews that build these things, so.
Okay. I guess we're all set at this point. Thank you. We'll open it up to the audience. Does anybody here?
You don't mind?
No.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Anybody here in the audience who wishes to speak on behalf of this particular application?
I'm interested.
Okay. Dory, do you have any?
Uh, no.
All your letters?
State and the United County, United County planning, state, you have no recommendations.
Me neither. Okay. We'll close. Want to just go through the criteria? Whether the benefit can be achieved by or not feasible to the applicant?
Oh, it could be.
The next is. It would be inscrutable.
Okay. Understood, change the neighborhood character of nearby properties?
No.
I don't think so. Whether request is substantial?
No.
I don't think so. Replacing something that was there. Whether request have adverse physical or environmental effects?
I don't think so.
No? Karen?
Nothing, yep.
Alleged difficulty of self-creating? Okay. Alleged difficulty is self-created? Doesn't sound it?
No.
Does somebody want to make the motion?
I will. Two proof?
Two proof, right?
Yes.
Hi.
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 Alan Fader?
Alan Fader. You're all set. Thank you. This is Joe. Good luck.
Thank you.
That part's easier.
Okay.
See you over time.
Mr. Green, I didn't see you hiding back there.
I didn't see you there either.
No. You're hiding. I'm worried. You're stood out like a red bull.
You were hiding.
Yeah, thank you. We'll talk in a few weeks. See you.
Bye.
Okay. The application of Mr. Glenn Erickson, Integral Studios, for Hillside Garden Apartments, 245 Oxford Row, New Hartford, New York. The applicant is reconfiguring a lot that does not have street frontage. The high-density residential zone requires 60 feet of frontage. Therefore, he is seeking a 60-foot area variance for frontage on property in the zone High Density Residential.
Do you want to give us a quick summary, or you better go ahead and jump?
Glenn Erickson knows it right in the background.
Okay. All right.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have, Meg.
Sure. Yep. Your associate is?
I'm Glenn Erickson, and I'm the owner of Integral Studios.
Julian Clark with Boney Engineering.
My engineer.
Gotcha.
Laura Jears.
Okay, thank you. So we've actually been in a process with the, with the board and with the planning board, for a planned PDD residential on these properties. So these are two different properties, which we currently own in two different entities. And right now, what we have is a property that we purchased from Castle Estates, which is behind the Castle Estates subdivision, and also behind our property. It's also, that's up against the railroad tracks, and it also backs up to the Washington Mills Athletic Park. So it is landlocked. There's a little split of land, it's 15-foot wide, that goes out to Imperial Drive, and that's not wide enough for vehicular access.
Yeah.
It's landlocked. So we purchased this recently, it closed a little over a month ago. And our aim is to, because this is zone, medium-density residential, is to develop this along with a portion of the rear of the Hillside Garden Estates property. That property has 193 units, but it has an area in the rear that has virtually nothing on it. So we want to, we want to do is create a new property that we can put the new development on as one parcel, and keep the existing Hillside Garden Apartments on one parcel, so there'll be two different parcels, which is the reason for the, for moving the lot line, so that we can align the lot lines with the development plans going forward. In addition.
How many structures are being built?
We will be building 150 units.
How many buildings?
And townhouses.
There's 15, I think, seven, right?
Yeah, so we have seven units for 100, and there are 105 of the units, so 7 to 105. So that's 15, right?
Yeah, 15 buildings.
15 buildings with one additional building, which is the apartment, so it's a total of 16, so we'll be putting on. And that will all go in this portion right here. In addition, we have a river that runs through, right now, both property, excuse me, creek, runs through both properties. That creek is subject to floods, so there's a 100-year flood plain in that creek. The current, the lender that we're using on the run application with, for Hillside Garden Apartments, has indicated that they cannot lend on a property that has a 100-year flood plain on it. So we also need to move the lot line in order to comply with our lender's requirements. We have a part of commitment, this is a loan that we can close in about 30 days, if, you know, we were to get this approved. So there's two reasons why we need to have this action taken, so that we can, in other words, having the lot line moved over. In order to move the lot line, we need the board's approval, because this is a non-conformant lot, no Castle Estates lot. It's non-conformant because it can't, it's not got adequate frontage on the streets. And it's grandfathered in up until now, but now that we're making this change, we need to have a variance so that we can make the change. After this meeting, should we be granted approval, this would go to the planning board, and the planning board would approve the actual adjustment of the lot line, but they cannot do that until your board approves the variance for the 60-foot of frontage. Because right now, we only have 15.
Can you go over the Castle Estates first diagram? What it says, 10 acres?
12 acres.
12 acres?
So this is what Castle Estates is today.
10.10.
This is what we have today, and.
And that's the proposed property that you're thinking of buying?
We have purchased this.
You've purchased it.
Okay. So this is a, but yeah, it's a different entity, which is why they're not being combined into one parcel. In addition, just from a technical point of view, to develop a property, it's much harder to get the loan for it if you have 100, if I have 193 units, and to get a construction loan, a portion of that becomes very difficult in today's financial markets. So to have it on a separate lot makes it much easier to develop the parcel, get the loans as well.
All right, thank you for that. Let me follow up with a question. With that said, at 12.10, are you going to construct all the units that we just spoke about on that parcel? Or are we combining?
No. A combined parcel.
I'll pick that up, yeah. Okay. Which makes that how big?
20.
It's going to be the overall 20 acres?
The 20 acres, yes. We'll have the 150 units on it.
So all the new units would be on that 20 acres?
That is correct. Every one of them.
Given the infrastructure, the, our sewage.
Well, that's what we're going through with the, with our planning board process, getting the site plan approval, the subdivision approval, so on and so forth, that we need for this. We have gone through a process to, in fact, confirm that we have adequate sewage, we have adequate water, we have adequate electricity, so on and so forth. And in fact, we've just gone through the secret process, and we're getting, we're getting positive letters from everybody.
Let me have another follow-up question, Meg. We're going to add that, those units on there, and that is landlocked, as you said, to the rear with the railroad and the Washington Mills. What other way would there be to come in there with all the additional amount of people moving in with their cars?
Everybody will be going through the Hillside Garden, uh, Estates property. So, from a, from a frontage point of view, instead of being a hundred ninety-three units, there'll be a hundred ninety-three plus a hundred and fifty units. We have gone through a traffic study to confirm that there will be, I think the average increase in, in Eagle Bay is less than one second according to the traffic state. So there's no significant material, uh, disadvantage to this traffic, uh, going onto Hillside Garden Apartments. And all of this traffic will go through that property. And I would mention, these properties, when, when properties were zoned fairly recently, uh, in New Hartford, this parcel was zoned high-density, this parcel, landlocked as it is, was zoned medium-density. So, from my sixth-grade point of view, the only way to do that is, is if somebody was thinking that, in fact, this was going to happen, that this property would someday be accessed through Hillside Gardens, through Oxford. Otherwise, why would anybody have done that zoning?
Sure, so you're not gonna take any of the old buildings down, we're gonna add...
That is correct.
Okay. Well, none of the...
None of the units. We will be relocating one, uh, maintenance building on site, that's it. Everything else stays where it is, and the relocated building will be enlarged and enhanced.
You're also gonna be creating easements, cross easements?
Yeah, we'll also be creating cross easements over the properties, so that, uh, there's proper access and legal access from both sides.
And there's not going to be an opening to Imperial Drive?
No.
No, uh, then you don't have enough, so this is on Castle Estates, this is on the railroad tracks.
Right.
This is all the athletic fields.
Right.
And this is houses, and that's where you gotta go in and out of here.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's no other way it could happen.
I got you.
Now, we will, we will have a water main that goes through here, so we will be, have some construction equipment for a few days to get that put in. There's a current storm drain that goes right through there right now, which is the reason it's here. Uh, we have an abandoned sewage system that was out here from the nineteen forties, was abandoned, you know, decades ago, and again, that was accessed from there.
Are you gonna have to, you're talking about that creek and the flood plain and stuff, is that gonna have to be done before you get in there and do anything?
Well, with our project, when we put together our project, we will be doing stream bank enhancements, uh, because of the flood. That, and that is part of the approval process. And that, we are in, will be in application with DEC, Army Corps of Engineers, we've had them both out to the site to take a look at our preliminary plans, but from what I can tell, they've, they've both been very happy with what we're proposing, and, uh, we've gotten good feedback from them.
Trent?
You would, Terry? I do have, I might miss a couple more if I may. You're, you've got the twenty acres that you're there, uh, are you obviously maxing the capacity of your dwellings that you're gonna build there, and, I'm looking at parking and traffic and everything else that goes there. So, are, is that your maximum amount that you can put into that area?
Well, I'm not quite sure of the best way to answer that.
Are you leaving any vegetation would be another question?
Well, yes, we are, we're, the vegetation we're leaving is...
We have the plan showing the development.
Yeah, yeah. Actually, we can show you what the project looks like right here. Oh, it's upside down, I'll turn that around. So, these are the townhouse buildings here, this is an apartment building. This, this goes on the existing Hillside Gardens parcel, which is why zoning-wise, it's, it's allowed for me to put it, for us to put it here. In addition, this area, this area in here is wetlands, according to the Army Corps of Engineers, according to their standards, and we're putting in mitigation pond, storm, uh, drainage ponds in this area. So, uh, and then the rest of this area is hillside, so, you know, we've opted not to build in the hillside. Uh, we've built in the terrace areas, which is why we call it Hillside Terrace Loss, and then we cannot build in the areas that we're utilizing. So, there will be no addition, and then this area we're not building on, one, because it's a flood plain, but two, because it's on the other side of the river, and the, uh, we, we couldn't even get a pedestrian bridge to go across, to cross the creek.
Sometimes that creek does look like a river, though.
Well, you're absolutely right, you know, it looks like more than a river, it looks like a...
This, this gives me the visual, this gives me the visual that I was looking for, right there.
And, uh, and then there's a possibility that we will be, actually be donating this section, uh, to the town in the future, but that's an open question, that's something to decide in the future.
So, do you think there'd be any envi, environmental effects that would be created by this project?
But the, the, the position I've taken on this, with all my consultants and engineers, is that this property should be, and the creek should be in better shape after the developments up than it is today.
But that's the, um, the planning board...
Well, because, because remember, issues, one, we're creating, uh, the ponds here for, in order to store water during storms. We're also gonna be putting, uh, enhancing the landscaping in here with swales and retention areas for water on the existing Hillside Garden Apartments. We have, uh, about forty acres here and about sixty acres to the inside of Oxford Road that actually drain into the site right now, which is why we have wetlands in here. And we are, as, as we, and we're setting up the paths that that water goes through so the water is retained and treated before it goes into the creek. Uh, so we're doing everything we can to enhance what we have and to make things better than they are today. We've hired hydrologists, we've hired ecologists to help make sure that this is what we do. And we've hired a great engineer as well.
I have, Karen's in there? There you go, Sam.
I am, that conceptual site plan gave you a good idea of a...
It's a timeframe.
Our timeframe?
Yeah.
Uh, well, we need to, you know, it's probably gonna take us a couple of months more to go through the approval process with the planning board. Then, it's gonna take us another two to six months to go through the DEC, Army Corps of Engineer process. At that time, we'll be starting our, you know, we'll have all of that done, so I know exactly what we have as a project before we start our architectural and construction documents. Uh, that's probably gonna take at least nine months, uh, to go through that process, we get our building permits, get our construction, you know, so we're talking several years before we're really gonna start construction, probably.
Hey, I'm not surprised.
All set, at this point? Okay, thank you. We'll open it up, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on behalf of this particular application?
Yes, sir. Couple things, first of them, what about noise?
Check in for the record, too?
Yep, uh, Nashi, Vin Nashi, I live on Imperial Drive. So, um, you haven't said anything about, um, noise?
Well, there, obviously during construction, there will be some noise on site, uh, because of the construction. However, what we're doing is we're maintaining all of the trees that are along this bank area as they are right now. In addition, uh, we'll be taking the, uh, buildings that are along the railroad tracks, and we'll actually be using them as a noise shield, uh, so that they will actually limit some of the noise currently coming from, uh, from the highway, uh, that comes across the property here. And so, and, and the residential area itself will be very quiet once it's been built. So, we anticipate, and the other thing we're doing is, we're gonna be encouraging electric vehicles by having, uh, outlets, two twenty, two forty volt outlets, uh, for all of our parking, for all of our units to at least have one such outlet, so that we can have as many electric cars as the market will allow. So we're doing everything we can to reduce noise to the extreme. In addition, our lighting plan is that we will have less than one candle power of light crossing this border, uh, crossing the property line. So we're doing everything we can to minimize and to buffer the surrounding properties from this development.
And then the property itself is also twenty, twenty feet below Imperial Drive?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
The property itself, the land is plus minus twenty feet lower?
Actually, between twenty and thirty feet, depending where you're standing. Because, because of this hill, all of these, all of these properties are twenty to thirty feet above our, um, property level.
I notice on the, on the diagram, up on the upper right-hand corner, you've got something going over to, yeah, right there. What is that?
Uh, this is, there's a little piece of land that, that, that is part of the, the property, uh, the Castle Estates property that goes to Imperial Drive, that's fifteen feet wide. There, there's currently a storm drain, it's actually a storm drain system, but you can see the storm drain right at Imperial Drive. And then that pipe goes into our property, and that's what actually helps create the wetlands right here, because that's untreated water when it comes out today. And we will, uh, currently, we have a private water system, uh, for Hillside Garden Apartments. For the new property, we'll be having a public water system, which means we need to have a, uh, closed circuit. So we'll have water coming in, and then, uh, also, and then that circuit will be completed here at Imperial Drive. That enhances the fire high-trump capability of the fire department, they're very much wanted us to have that. Uh, so the purpose of this property right now is for utilities.
The only other thing I would have is, um, what would you do to minimize the people who walk from Hillside Gardens now and cut through to get down to the Hannaford? 'Cause we get quite a bit of, um, pedestrian traffic that cut through from Oxford down through our properties, mine in particular, and the neighbors', and they, they actually step and they destroy a fence. They got like a wire fence that goes up in the back, and they've done that, and I've had them many times, tell them, you know, don't cut through the property.
Well, I'm sorry to hear that, I hadn't, hadn't been aware of that, we, in my ten years, I haven't heard a complaint yet. We certainly will take a look at, uh, putting a fence or enhancing any existing fences that are up. Most of the properties do have fences, uh, in the rear of the property. Certainly not all, but most of the, most of the properties that are walked here currently have their own privately maintained fences.
I've got a fence around my yard also, but that doesn't stop them from coming through.
They come over your fence?
My, I have a pool, and there's a fence around it. Okay, and then I got hedges up the back, too, but they'll just come right through, they come through the hedges.
Well, I'd, I'd love to take a look at your property sometime with you and see what we can do to, to help improve that.
Well, I'm just bringing it up because it's happened, you know, I don't think anybody's ever called over there, but, since you're doing this work, you know, I think it's a good time to just bring up some of the issues that surround your apartment.
I think it's a good time to bring up, we're happy to, happy to talk to you about it, see what we can do to help, you know, solve the problem.
Especially with additional people.
That's what we're concerned about.
Good, thank you. Anybody else that wishes to speak on behalf of this application? No? Okay. Um, any, any calls or letters, Derek?
Uh, no, no calls, no letters, um, well, we got a couple of calls that came to the office, they, they, people wanted to know what was going on, but they was, and there's no recommendation from either United County DPW or United County Plan.
There's nothing there from a traffic control aspect either? Oxford Road is owned by who, the town, governed by, and...
I believe it's the county.
It's the county? Does it count?
It's why I sent it to United County DPW, they have no power. Other than the normal, um, permit requirements.
Right.
I mean, it's part of the file, but there's no...
Yeah, my concern, and we'll talk about it.
Please give me a call, after you take a look at your property.
So we'll, uh, that's it, we'll close, comments? Uh, do you want, comments or criteria?
I like, criteria, why don't we do that first?
Alright. Whether the benefit can be achieved by means feasible to the applicant?
Really?
No, I'm asking for a sixty-foot, they've only got sixty feet of frontage, can't, can't do it, I mean, that's it.
So I don't, I don't think... They can't go left, they can't go right.
I don't think they do, there's an alternative.
Does it ever change the neighborhood character of nearby properties?
I don't think so.
No, I don't think it is.
It's a, it's a goal, it's a goal area now. Apartments, apartment houses, townhouses, that's... Could be the same.
Well, the impact may be different, uh, traffic flow going back in there.
Not possible.
Yeah. They face the planning board?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Whether the request is substantial?
Yeah, that's, we're gonna use that word, questionable.
You know, some of these things will probably get deferred over to the planning board.
Yeah, that's what we're saying.
Whether the request, that's it, yeah. Whether the request will have adverse physical or environmental effects?
I don't think we could know that, Billy.
Yeah, we won't know that with, with what's going on there, but I think it's a thorough explanation.
It doesn't sound it, it's, uh, presentation, okay, but we don't know.
Lily, less difficulty of self-created?
We may have to buy a property.
Okay, is that the, um, motion or discuss...
Yeah, let's discuss this, uh, the only concern I have is the impact of the additional property. We're, we're obviously taking something that's there and creating and adding more building to it, more concrete to it, more traffic to it. We're taking some of the vegetation out, uh, and we're, obviously Oxford Road is a two-lane highway up there. Uh, but I'm kinda glad to see that the two thirty-nine from the county came back with no impact, which was my concern. Uh, but I do sympathize with the neighbors, because, uh, we are adding some more people in that area. Again, I'm not sure if we can get into that area of governing, you know, fences and all that other thing, but I think the person who presented it heard the neighbor out there, so that was one of the other concerns. But, my, I want to be noted that my concern would be the amount of impact that it's gonna do to that.
I think that, I'm trying to make that reflect.
I agree with that as well, that, I think it would ever, would need to be addressed.
Well, I, I don't wanna speak for Glenn, but the planning board and the town don't necessitate this to happen for the development to go through. Development, if this property was melded into the rest of the property, he could still do it. You're not really deciding as to whether he can do it or not.
No.
He needs this, correct me if I'm wrong, financing basis, and it's much like the Preston Fairing Home or the Meadows, how they had to come in for variances on the front, and to get the financing for these locks.
Right. So he can do it either way, if you get the money, it's just getting that institution to agree to it.
Yeah, I wish that we would have had that explanation earlier, that would have...
He, he actually did, I don't think we caught him, he did, he did say that.
I asked him, and he said...
It's the difference between, you could build it now, because you pay a loan, or you have to wait till you can...
Alright, so now with that said, I think we went through the criteria.
Yeah.
Does somebody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion, that'd be good.
Do you want to add to it that they talked with the neighbors?
As proposed.
As proposed?
I'll second.
Karen?
Hi.
Terry?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. You're all set?
All in favor?
Thank you.
All in favor, good luck.
Good making it.
Much appreciated.
All we ask you is, is that you obviously talked your fingers about that. Yeah, well, thank you, appreciate that.
Oh, wait a minute.
Right.
Oh, they're the correct.
All the minutes?
You got it. Yes.
There was so much going on.
Well, Dory, you told all that at the start.
I'll talk to him anyway.
Very nice presentation.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, we got a couple changes to make, but I don't... I'll, I'll make a motion to move them out. What? The last thing?
Did you try a second?
That's ours.
Don't be giving that up.